I'm sure, Mr. Chairman, can I, do we have a recess while the?
Yes.
Copy.
Sure.
We are live.
We are live, so I call this, call this meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted via Zoom as allowed. Um, I just want to make sure that everybody can hear me and that, um, I can hear you. So, uh, Mr. Matthews.
I am present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley.
Yes.
Thanks. And the chair, you can hear me. Um, Mr. Nelson is not going to be present at this meeting. He has a commitment. So it's the three of us for this morning. Every vote will be taken via roll call vote. Uh, the item on the agenda, we have one is to discuss Article Seven at the special town meeting. As an amendment has, a proposed amendment has come to our attention after viewing the finance committee's meeting. Um, there's an intention to amend the article, uh, which would allow funding for, uh, temporary use of the Hillside building, um, only, um, at the amount of $350,000. And, uh, there's nothing else in the article that would move ahead, uh, for a school administration building at this time, even though the heading of the article, uh, heading does say for, uh, you know, space for school administration. So, um, I just wanted to convene this meeting this morning. Mary and I, Mary and I had had some discussions. We had some discussions, um, with the schools and I'd like to take a position, um, on the amendment because as Mary Ann moves forward with her presentation and a, um, I'd also like to discuss a letter going out, uh, stating our position, but I wanted to make it formal and just hear from the members, um, on your position on this proposed amendment, uh, that we expect uh, on town meeting floor. So with that long introduction, um, Mr. Matthews or Ms. Cooley, if, why don't I go, Mary Ann, you're the one that's, uh, that's presenting this article and, and has intimate knowledge. So I'll turn it over to you.
Well, so I, I think that the board is fairly familiar with these issues, but, um, at this point, the article is no longer about the design of Emory Grover. It speaks only to the renovation of Hillside. The numbers were created sort of with a back of an envelope look that may or may not be sufficient, but you know, we'll kind of ignore that. The real issue is that if, um, the amendment were to pass, all right, and, um, we were not moving forward with design of Emory Grover, that will add an additional six month delay to that process, even if we do the same thing that we're doing right now, which seems to be the conclusion we've come back to seven times when this has been studied. So, um, if that happens, we'll add an additional half a million dollars to the taxpayers' cost for the building is the sort of sole effect of the delay. Um, actually, I shouldn't say it's the sole effect because the other effect likely is to trigger some other requirements at Hillside, um, that hadn't been planned to be done. So, it gets complicated and it gets complicated fast, given the time window, um, at Hillside being very limited for occupancy before triggering these other requirements that start to plead toward ADA compliance. Um, I think, uh, definitely I would recommend that our board vote against the amendment. Um, it doesn't accomplish our goals, which is to find a, and design and build a home for Emory Grover. Um, the conclusion of the study is that, uh, the project that is in Article Seven as it's originally drafted is the right article at this time. So, um, we should move forward.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I know the schools are putting together a letter, uh, with their summary of their opposition. Kate, as far as a letter coming from this board is that I, I know time is, is dwindling, but would we be able to put something together? What would be the best way to communicate to town meeting members our position?
Well, we're doing a mailing like at three o'clock. So, um, we have some time where you can, you can always post things on the website.
But if we wanted to get something out, we would have until, the mailing's running at three, is that?
Well, and I've photographed it, right? So.
Right, of course.
Yeah. So this morning, if you let me know what you want, I can jot something in.
Okay.
Dave, can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Mary Ann, yeah.
The, Kate gave me the revised number for the 3% um, yesterday. Um, I think I understand that, that, does that put the entire 20 million in the 3%? It does not necessarily provide for CPA funds. It doesn't include 6 million in CPA funds. It does not, correct?
No, uh, it includes the 6 million of CPA funds.
It includes. Okay. All right. I just wanted to know for sure. Thanks.
Um, just a couple of things, since we've taken the trouble to gather here today. Uh, yeah, I, at a certain level, this isn't even necessary to do this. Uh, this, the actions of the finance committee are utterly inconsistent with the recommended vote, uh, already taken by the, this board. Um, and, and I, and, and I'm be confident just to let Mary Ann, um, use her own good judgment in, in advocating our view and getting Article Seven passed in its, in its, in its printed form. However, we're here and having said that, I'll add my, my two cents. One, I hope there will be a kind of applause, uh, at some point and some careful communication, maybe even formally, you know, formally with the moderator, maybe Matt and Kate, uh, or what, or Keith, Chris, or whoever can, have a little conference call with the moderator. I think this issue of whether or not the amendment is outside the four, the four corners, substance of the amendment is outside the four corners. It's a real one. I'm not going to dispute the art, the ruling of the town, of the moderator on town meeting floor, but I think he should be, he should expect that there are a lot of people that view it the way that I do and that if he, if he has a contrary view, he should be prepared to state a careful vision of why that's so. It is, the, the thing is deficient in a couple of ways. It really, we've notified the public that we're, that we were asking for money so that we can go forward with renovating Emory Grover under a fairly complicated plan that ultimately has, of all inputs such as CPA funding and, 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 um, certain dollar value and floor plans and so on. We've got exhaustive work over this. The fact that we have a little money in there to go down to, to have for temporary space at Hillside is, is a tail on the dock just because they had to go somewhere while the work is being done on the main project. To say that they can make this all about the tail, to be used, not attached to a dog, is really, it's kind of a joke and it's, it's, um, particularly because at least in my even layman's understanding of this, the numbers are a mess and the proposal is a mess because the plant, the building inspector will not allow them to do what they're talking about doing. And it wouldn't be them doing it. It would be us doing it because town meeting takes their guidance on this and directs us. This plan is not actionable. The building inspector won't let us do it in the building, won't let the school admit into the building on a temporary basis unless there's, unless they have, they know where they're going long term. Other than that, my understanding is it requires full renovation, ab initio, which means more cost than, than the whole Emory Grover project. So this is, this is nonsense. It is outside the four corners and it is nonsense as substance. Um, so, um, I think in terms of a letter going out, um, I would probably want to devote the weight of, it shouldn't be really long, needs to be very clear, and the weight of the substance is that, is that the recommendation, the finance committee does not square with town planning and policy for a variety of reasons and it's utterly impractical. And that, and again, reemphasize the enormous amount of work that's gone into this and pointing to the, and, and the careful thought and the trade offs and, and, and the need, our need for support. And again, point people back to the positive documents in favor and, and support for Article Seven as printed.
Right. Thank you for those points, Dan. Mary Ann?
Dan, well, I think, you know, I believe all of that is true. Okay. And the finance committee makes a big thing in their video, um, which, which I recognize had been seen as of some point yesterday, 52 times or whatever it was, but more than anybody else's video. Okay.
I agree.
About, about the financing plan.
Yeah.
And I do feel that there's a bit of the financing plan being held as the bogeyman out here that, you know, if we just wait until December, that there will be this lovely plan that makes the next 20 years of the town finances perfectly clear and will know exactly what we're going to do. And I do feel that that needs to be taken on as well. Um, so that the town meeting members know that we are going to do the usual course, which gives us a view of what's happening in the future and brings them a plan that is relatively within guidelines. Um, a- as we look at the most immediate future. So, um.
I agree. You need to rebut what, what the finance committees point, the key points that they make and, and, but it's the positive case that we've got to close with because what they're doing is just throwing a lot of yes, but in the air in the hopes that they can get a third of town meeting to vote no. It's very poor practice, but I don't, I, I think we need to, both, we had to rebut and stay in focus and not spend too much time doing it, given the limited attention span that people will give to this thing.
Right. You know, it's also, it's, it's frustrating. We had that financing facility group get together for months and, uh, at the end of the day, it, there was, it was really not impactful, but, um, it is clear to me that looking at all the sites, that there wouldn't be a less expensive option after you take in CPA money than this project. So, you know, they're talking, people are talking about another site or Steven Palmer or buying a piece of land, adding all that in the ex, you know, construction costs being escalated the way they are, even if we kick this two years down or three years down, I can't see a, a less expensive option than, than this. Um, and this is an expensive option, but we're kind of, we're at that place where we have to decide to, to move ahead with it. And I will say the schools, I think, even if they did get this money, wouldn't use it as, as the finance committee would like them to and wouldn't occupy temporary space, even if they could at Hillside and would be looking to another option. So, um, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, um, that's why we have the system we have to see if it makes sense to, uh, the town meeting. Um, but with that, you know, we got together and, and I know Dan, uh, of course, Mary Ann has all the latitude to, in her presentation and, but I think part of this, of course, is the letter and you made some great points to add to the letter. Um, and I think that's important to get out to town meeting members. Mary Ann, are you thinking of doing an amended video or how do you want to handle that?
So I don't, I don't think we want to do an amended video. I mean, our video is a positive case for the building and I.
I know, to the immense side. Yep.
So I think the question is, are we going to do an additional video? I, I mean, I have no idea what the moderator's permitting or not permitting. So, um, I don't think any of us do. It's kind of a very unusual situation. But I think we need to do a second video that expresses our position on the amendment in addition to the letter.
I agree, and I can, I'm going to check with the moderator today, um, have a discussion with him on a couple of things. So I will ask that question and just confirm that.
So a letter, a letter and a video expressing our concern and opposition to the proposed amendment.
Correct.
Yeah. And I think as, I, I think as we said, hopefully every moderator will be fine under the unusual circumstances of us posting it right in the Article Seven information. But if not, we can simply put it up as a link and, and, and guide people to it. You know, we could put it in the documents. We could put it, our letter in the documents and have a link to the video, you know, posted with the letter and it grew off.
I'm not going to have that by whenever we send today.
No worry about that. You're handling this, Mary Ann. So it's far bigger. No, I'm not, I'm not going to tell you how to do your job. I did have one, uh, kind of a subsidiary point I just wanted to mention basis, and it may not come out directly. But one of the many, you know, it's all yes, but opposition to this. The, 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 uh, the opponents are not united on any positive issue. One thing that's, uh, I th- I've sensed is out there is there's interest in certain, in, in some folks in the community on increasing the amount of CPA, CPA money that goes for affordable housing. And they're, they're pushing that analysis to argue that this somehow, that the CPA funding coming into this somehow limits that. I don't really think that that's true in any, you know, standard scenario because the argument about housing is in CPA, you got an automatic, you got 10% for open space, 10% for housing, 10% for historical preservation, and the other 70 is discretionary within any eligible category. Well, um, we know we're, we've already committed to go to, to take 10% of the seven, the 10, an extra 10% we put into housing. And I, and people can entertain arguments about increasing that percent beyond there and we, and that's a fair discussion. But, um, my impression is if the, although actually a lot more of, uh, Emory Grover than six, than $6 million is eligible for CPA, I think that the baseline that we're planning on is $6 million for CPA funding for this. Over, I don't know if this is 20 year bonding or 30 year bonding, but I, would be my expectation. And I'm sort of looking to Dave, and I know it's early in the morning, that that, all of that, that $6 million can be bonded from the 10% historical in, in, in real life over an extended period of time.
The proposal is in, uh, guidance that the CPC has given, like it would be, uh, CPA debt. Uh, and, uh, and we are amortizing it over 20 years.
Yeah. There are. Pardon me?
There are other, uh, factors to go into determining the length of the bond, not the specific project, but the town's overall credit rating and then other projects.
Okay, but the debt service on $6 million, uh, likely financing levels without, although we use the 6% when we're estimating, we're likely actually to do better. So it's back of the envelope. It's fair to say that, 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 that the 10%, we wouldn't have to go beyond the historical minimum 10% share to be reasonably assured of covering most of that debt out, most if not all of the, of the CPA portion, the debt out of CPA reserves, historic funds.
Uh, the $6 million does work within what's allowed by state law and, uh, the initial conversations that CPC has is the, they were receptive to the, uh, proposed timeline based upon the conservative, uh, factors that I built the model around.
Okay.
So we do have, I, it's fair to say, I think, Dave, we do have other projects that are still bonded that are coming out of it. They are in historic category.
Uh, correct. The, uh, town hall is.
Still.
I got historic.
So do both fit in there or not? Or do they almost fit there?
It's. The, uh, the proposal that was presented, $6 million financed by CPA funds works within the CPA revenue stream. Uh, it's not about 10%. This, the law requires 10% to be reserved, uh, or spent every year for historic resources. We more than, uh, meet that requirement with our current debt service with town hall, which declines every year. And, um, the Emory Grover, uh, project, if that were approved and funded by CPA, would come under the historic. And again, it would satisfy the 10% minimum requirement for, um, for another 10, 15 years.
I, I think I'm asking a different question. I'm still not sure, Dave, whether, where we are. So if we have town hall and we layer on top of that Emory Grover, do those two items account for more than 10% of the projected CPA annual funding?
Oh, yes.
Which would be customarily set aside by statute.
Oh, yes. Much, uh, much so. I mean, the current, uh, town hall debt exceeds to 10%.
All right. So what percent of overall CPA funding will be taken up by this? Do we have?
It's, well, first, when you do debt analysis, you're not allowed to consider state funds. So, uh, the approach that we take is, uh, that no more than 70% of the, um, CPA surcharge would be available for debt service. That is how we make a determination of whether, uh, debt financing is workable in terms of the, um, the specific projects. The CPC will make a judgment of whether to fund that. But within state law requirements, uh, 70% of the surcharge revenue is the most that the town can, uh, pledge uh, towards debt service. And with, uh, in the plan that was presented to CPC, town hall is currently being paid. Uh, Rosemary, uh, project is currently paid. And if the Emory Grover project was, uh, uh, approved, the $6 million worth of CPA supported debt service, all that works within the 70%. It's actually less than 70%. There's still some attic room if they were to take on yet another project to be debt financed in the future.
Yeah, I guess in I, unfortunately, my, my question is a, is, uh, maybe I qualify for the finance committee because this is kind of a, my approach is kind of a back of the envelope thing. It really does count other factors and it mainly makes, but not some of the, necessarily, I can recognize the conservative assumptions that you use, Dave, but it's a practical matter. I guess to distill my argument, I'm saying we're going, we're, we're at 20% on, on our, uh, on our housing, on what we're saying, we're planning on the housing commitment being the 10 plus an additional 10. Now, even if we, if we took that to, to 30 or even 40%, that would not impinge on this, on the debt service of, of, for, for $6 million going to, uh, Emory Grover. That's my argument, particularly when I, I do count that we're getting a 30% match at this point and that that's likely to continue for some reasonable number of years in the future, at least until the town hall is paid off and the whole thing becomes much more favorable anyway.
As, uh, currently the, there is a substantial amount of money for affordable housing. It's already set aside in, in the reserve. And, um, and certainly, um, state aid funds, uh, would be available, uh, to appropriate towards an affordable housing project as well as, uh, other CPA cash. I would not want to just say that taking the board 40% every year, just, now I, I need to run those numbers and such, but I've never heard of them looking at a project of, of requiring that annual contribution. They've been looking more in the three to $5 million range, which they already have more than half of the money in cash sitting to support the housing authority.
Yeah, I'm not so much talking about, um, the housing authorities' approach to this, but there, there may be some town meeting members who, uh, have paired up an argument that I think is out there that we're, we're, we want to be focusing town efforts on doing, using CPA funding for housing and the Emory Grover is a, is, uh, you know, means those funds go, are going in another direction, uh, you know, for administrative offices and impairing that. And I think, I really think that in the realities of the management of town finance, that's actually, that argument is just not practically so. Um, but I, and I'm not trying to overly, you know, make you, cause you to commit to anything, you know, that you don't recognize as sound finance planning, but that is my impression. I like to find the right way to articulate it.
Uh, I would say that CPC needs to weigh on that. I have not heard that from a practical aspect from the CPC that, that, uh, was at all in jeopardy. I know it was one of the factors that they considered when trying to, uh, to determine what would be the maximum amount of CPA funds that they would pledge to the Emory Grover project. So it certainly was near thinking, but I am not aware of CPC, um, the committee expressing any concern about the ability to address affordable housing, um, a funding request, uh, now or into the future, unless something has changed.
So I'm thinking about some push from out, non-governmental folks, where they include some town meeting members.
That's understood, but again, that's where CPC would have to come in and, and to address the town meeting. It's a fair question, but I think it's easily answered.
All right.
And.
Yes, Mary Ann.
I think it's fair to say that CPC historically has tended to, uh, adopt projects that sort of spread the dollars around in some ways, which is, you know, the notion that all the dollars would go into a particular bucket. Uh, other than the original financing for town hall, that hasn't been the way that those funds have been handled by the committee. So.
Well, I think if you look at this project, and I think, Dave, you mentioned it, or I know you mentioned it, where we know that much more of this project is eligible for funding than the $6 million, especially after their, you know, when they do their design. But yet they have room, if they do go with the 6 million, there's room for either another project or I guess that could be put towards this project, but I think that they would use it most likely for something else and have that, that cushion. So we're not maxing out our availability of dollars on this project, you know, um, and I think that argument can be made that it could be used for something else. Um, but yeah, I agree with Dan. That is going to come. Someone that has been brought up multiple times, almost like this is mutually exclusive. You do one or the other, but that's just not the case. Mary Ann?
It feels like that should be some, a question that's added to the FAQ. I mean, I'm sure it will come up on town meeting floor, but, um, it might be worth, uh, drafting something that could go into the FAQ around this question out there about all the CPC dollars into affordable housing.
And here's another way of, of looking at it, which might be just to say, okay, we're, we are concerned about the, you know, CPC is a pot that has multiple, uh, ass that come to it. We, and, uh, in, you know, this, if, if a $6 million is committed bonded over 20 years, uh, based on our revenue estimates, that will represent during that 20 years, um, an annual draw of, of X percent of, uh, of, 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 of conservatively estimated funding. And, um, maybe that gives you the, because it's not a big, it's not a very large percent. I don't know if it, if it's, I don't know if it's five or 15, but it's not, it's not a lot, particularly if you count the 30% state aid, which I would.
Yeah. We also have to stay in our lane here and not step on the toes of the committee and say it's not a big deal, you know, but I understand.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no, it's not to step on the toes of the committee. It's just to try to put the thing in perspective.
Perspective, yep. No, that's agreed. Um, yes, Mary Ann?
And just one other thing. Dan earlier talked about the building inspector. It appears that there is not an official statement from the building inspector. So it's very challenge, I don't feel that I can make any statements related to the building inspector in the letter or the video. So I just wanted to say that.
Right.
No, but maybe you can say, our understanding of inspectional standards is that, for example, you cannot have, have, use, uh, Hillside for a temporary purpose unless you are saying where the temporary purpose is going to go at the end of the time in order to assure that it will, truly will be temporary and not a holdover.
So, so the question is, would the, people keep talking about getting a certificate of occupancy. That's ways down the road. The question is, would the building inspector give a building permit without knowing that?
And our expectations are worse. That's something that we're supposed to have in hand before we apply. I think you can say that.
You're saying a building permit for which, Mary Ann?
For Hillside.
Of a mini renovation.
Will he give a, a building permit for temporary use where you don't know where they're going permanently?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'd be conditioned, but again, that's obvious judgment. Yes.
But yes, I mean, so that's the, that's the real question is, would everything be resolved so that you'd actually get a bill, a building permit? Um, if, if the whole thing is down to certificate of occupancy, I mean, I don't know how this plays out exactly on a timeline because I haven't seen it, but it's just farther down the road.
We could say there are concerns about X, Y, and Z, right? Instead of just saying he will or will not, or, because I would hate to say, here's the standard. And then if he did have to use a little discretion, it might put.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't reference the building inspector personally at all. It's our understanding of, uh, building standards as they've been applied and need them is.
Okay.
This letter's coming together.
Well, so.
Oh my, okay. Um, Kate, do you have what you need as far, I know we can talk about highlights and Mary Ann, uh, but just for this meeting, are we clear? In the direction of.
I have the start of a draft here from last night, so I'm happy to send to you or. Yeah, because I turned into a pumpkin at eight.
The position of the board, four or five bullet points.
Okay.
Right? I mean, is it, are the schools sending something?
Yes. We have a draft from the schools and, uh, yeah, no, I don't expect the letter to come to, you know. Yes. We have a draft from the schools and uh, yeah, no, I don't expect the letter to come to, you know, all I'm saying is as long as we have kind of the points, I think. We flushed it out this meeting, so we, I can work on it and, okay, we'll work on this letter.
Yeah, and I, I can read things, but technically I'm in a meeting.
Okay.
Send me that, Mary Ann, that's really helpful.
Great.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion?
I don't believe.
We, we need to take a position, yeah.
I move, I move that the select board um, vote to recommend against approval of this. Of the finance committees um, proposed amendment to Article Seven. Um, communicate, authorize uh, the chair and vice chair and town manager to take such action. It's to, necessary to communicate that position to town meeting and advocate for and take all further consistent actions. In support of the board's recommendation of the, of the adoption of approval of Article Seven is printed in the warrant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews, for that motion. There's a second, Ms. Cooley, any further discussion? Here and now we come to the vote, uh, Ms. Cooley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's unanimous. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Is it debatable?
You owe me a coffee.
Yes.
And Ms. Cooley?
Yeah.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Have a great, great rest of the day.
Thank you. Thanks all.